Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh's City Council Regular Meeting. For Tuesday, March 29th, 2022, we ask the clerk if she would please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Senator O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith. Seven members present.
Thank you very much. And now we will, if you would stand and face the flag for our Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Lord bless the city. Amen. All right, you may be seated. Our next motion is a motion, is there amendments for the agenda, Madam Clerk? No, so that, huh? But that is not a motion to, that's on the agenda. There is no, there's no need for, there is no new motion, so there is no motion, there is no need for a motion to amend. Now we have proclamations. I think we have two to be read into the record.
Yes.
If you would please read them.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 225. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Mike Dunleavy for his 44 years of dedication, steadfast support and commitment to the electrical industry, the ABEW Local Number Five, and the Pittsburgh community. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, March 26th, 2022 to be Mike Dunleavy Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 227. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, April 1st, 2022 to be AB Manfredo Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
You're second. I'll be moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The proclamations are as ordered. Okay. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone the rules of council state. The comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which are or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted in any language that we know of. And so we have three registered speakers. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller, good morning. Good to have you with us.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsure, Germantown, Thackeray, Thackerville, Oklahoma, and Port Mandar, India. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate of the Presidency, 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. Asian Intelligence Month, March 2022, sponsored by the GIS. The Native American intelligence is connected to this because the Reds here descended mainly anthropologically from Asians. Red Native American intelligence example Dakota Sue Floyd, Kanji Dutta, Red Crow Westerman, U.S. American singer and actor who was on The X-Files for a while. Redness is similar to blackness, in my view, a cognitive cultural template for influencing public policy, like riverfront development. Concern of council evident from the 22 March 2022 proclamation sponsored by Ms. Gross, District Seven, for the Riverlife Corporation. Location, District One, Mr. Wilson, which partners with Rivers Casino, Location, District Six, Mr. Lavelle, if I read the maps correctly. Why? Because according to Riverlife's webpage, quote, "Pittsburgh's story is told through its riverfronts." I just think that's a bloody lie. The Cathedral of Learning is near a riverfront. So a corollary concern of council is the normalization of Pittsburgh's riverfront casino life as positive culture. Ms. Gross zoomed in, a personal story of riverfront inspiration. She wasn't here for the proclamation, which she sponsored. Ms. Gross, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. Wilson, and the rest of the council appear to want Pittsburgh to be another Macau in China or Goa in India. Maybe the red intelligence or the Chicksaw in Oklahoma who created the Windstar World Casino, the U.S.'s largest, can help. But Ms. Gross must know, but left out, I think, consistent with half this and half that approach of Democratic Party ideology, that denormalization into negative culture comes with casino life. Is it possible to have sex, drug, gambling addictive Stanley Kowalski waterfront acts here? No red blood in Pittsburgh riverfront water? No Jack Reacher stories? Ms. Gross must zap up and the rest of you to tell the stories of a male XY sex addict who got AIDS, a woman who lost all of her salary.
So before calling this next speaker, I will say this publicly for public comment and for those online and those who are listening. Council is going to very seriously be considering a change to public expression. Public expression is supposed to be on legislative. It is not a time for individuals to talk about their home life or talk about their interests. That's not the point of this. The point of this is only legislative. And so your job is to come to tell us your concerns about legislation. If it's not legislative, there is really no reason for you to comment. And so I'm giving you this advance warning now that we will be moving as a council to limit public comment to those things that are only in legislative in nature. And if there is no legislative concern, there is really no concern for public comment. The next registered speaker is Catherine Caressi.
Good morning.
We are so glad to have you. This is one of our rare treasures in our city, and it's good to see you, good to have you with us.
Thank you so much. I'm so happy to be here. I speak today in honor of my friend Kate Wyland, who is retiring from the City of Pittsburgh after 42 years of faithful service. I met Kate in 1998. I had just come up to work in Mayor Tom Murphy's budget office, and I didn't have a clue. But she did. She knew everybody. She knew where everything was, and she was so calm and cool and had everything together. So I closely followed her and modeled her. And what I learned was respect. And she, we of course worked with the mayor, with city council, with all the budget people and with the directors, all of these people who had earned respect via their accomplishments and position, and of course she gave it to them. However, we also worked with myriad internal and external clients, all the men and women in City Hall and all the taxpayers. And Kate showed the exact same respect to those people as well. When a citizen calls City Hall, when they call government, it's an issue that's extremely important to them, and Kate gave that respect to them. I recall once our boss, Dr. Miller, a PhD, came in and he had something important that he needed her to do, and she was like, just one minute, I'm on the phone with Mrs. LeBobnik. And that was how she treated all of us. She also, what I also learned from her was respect for oneself, that she never, in a mean or vain way, but always, she's always commanded respect for herself. And I have many times in my career, in a difficult situation, I have stopped and calmed down and kind of channeled my inner Kate Wyland and thought, let's move forward in this situation with authenticity and respect. And one final, more global comment, but very much about Kate, is the value of city government and city employees. I think we all hear all the time snide comments about being a city worker. It must be absolutely exhausting, I think, particularly because it's so ironic. City government is the fabric of who we are. It's our public teachers, public school teachers, our public worksmen and women who do the snow and the trash and all that, our public safety, our police, fire, paramedics. Of course, it's our elected officials, our big ideas and big visions, but behind all those people are the white collar workers, the office workers, who literally hold it all together, and I don't think get the attention or the credit that they deserve. When you think about paying bills and letting contracts and data entry, turning on the lights, all those things, that's the wonderful back office workers. It is a honorable profession, and Kate has brought great honor to it. I wish her well in her retirement, and I thank her for her service, for her inspiration to me and for her friendship.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wilson, you often ask me about how I came to understand the budget. Most of my understanding of the budget has come from a person who just spoke, and I appreciate her tutelage and her friendship. Next is Akahana How Mckenna. Akahana How Mckenna. You have to unmute yourself, please.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grand rising to everyone. My title is Akahana How Mckenna. I am the Grand Inga of the Air Qua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, also known as Indians. Speaking of global intelligence, I was wondering if local city government was aware of the Russian-owned, the locally Russian-owned gas stations right here in our area, namely across the street from Peabody, namely on Negley Avenue in East Liberty, Penn Avenue in Main Street in Bloomfield. I wonder if we ourselves are helping to support a war in Ukraine by buying gas right here in our city that you govern and regulate? Just to leave that with you, as the national government leadership under Biden is currently pulling the plug on a lot of Russian, even the liquor, the Liquor Control Board has, and state liquor stores have removed Russian-owned and produced liquor from their stores and shelves. And I just wanted to make that a noted point, and you heard it here first. The DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, is holding public hearings on the usage of PFAS and other forever chemicals found in drinking water, stain-resistant carpets and foam used for firefighting, also found in groundwater as well. Contaminating soil causing concerns, causing cancerous tumors and even death. My question to you is, what, if anything, is the City of Pittsburgh doing not only to protect the people of the land, but to protect the wildlife, who is a vital, vital part of our ecosystem? That's all I have for you today. I look forward to meeting with you, President, Council, Teresa Kell Smith. We're excited to talk about the legislation that is being drafted on our behalf with the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations. And I thank you and wish you all a wonderful peaceful, harmonious, balanced day. Peace, light, and love, and like you allocate in.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our registered speakers. Are there people in the auditorium who would like to speak? Lieutenant Ludwig.
Thank you. My name is Les Ludwig. I'm from the Squirrel Hall area. And I've come to you today to ask your support in my search for a contract as a consultant to raise a fund to be used by Ed Gany, our wonderful mayor, for the purpose of solving problems that are not covered in the budget that he witnessed in his many visits to those troubled areas of our wonderful city. Cash in hand can speak loudly to solving a problem if it's one of physical nature. And a confidentiality agreement is a normal procedure and is presented at this time of a copy for each of you, so that I'm, what I'm asking you to do is to accept the fact that this is out of the textbook. In other words, it's nothing original. And therefore, it would serve the purpose of getting Ed and I into a meeting with the proper staff people so that 10 of the ideas that are sitting in my file, waiting for attention, that could produce possibly millions of dollars, that could then be used to solve problems. So therefore, I am stuck, so to speak, with the normal delays, which I called to our wonderful mayor's attention, and I thank you for the meeting, the brief meeting that we had. And this is part of the problem. This is the third time setback. Months are passing, and therefore, nothing's happening because this has to be signed in order for me to proceed. It doesn't come easily. The ideas to, that you have already seen, MBRO, Management Budget Revenue Opportunities Act of 2003. I'm the father. I didn't think it up in a day. It took months. Two for the price of one. Getting more money, more mileage out of the dollars for paving our streets by not paving under the cards, but nobody had ever thought to stop wasting the money doing it to the curb. So I thank you, and I hope that you will see the need and call the Law Department and urge them to okay this for Ed's signature. If you would take this, please. I thank you for your attention.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Hello this morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Will Tate, and I'm here in behalf of the homeless. Well, you know, the shelter, the men's shelter on Smithfield had closed early this year. And as you can see, the weather that we had out there the day before yesterday and yesterday, how cold it was. And right now, I'm one of the homeless because I'm trying to get my birth certificate, my identification correct. I have my social security card, and I need a place to stay. And a lot of people are homeless, that are homeless right now, are not just homeless because they don't want to have jobs or they don't want to work. I have a job pending in the mill, and I have to get my birth certificate corrected, and I need help with it. And there's a lot of people right now that need birth certificates and identification, and it's not as simple as it might seem. And also with the homeless, there's a lot of neglect with the people who are running the shelters by letting people stand out, you know, a lot of the things around here, like, thank goodness for the libraries, because they, a lot of times, sort of, they're housing the homeless, you know, by being open. And their security is second to none. And they're doing everything right. And the homeless doesn't have anywhere to go during the day, so they go to the libraries and different places to try to seek some type of, I guess, just, just to be, just to have somewhere to go. And I just think the homeless here in Pittsburgh are really neglected. And like I said, the libraries on a lot of days will close up at 5:00. And even when the homeless shelter was open, it doesn't open until 7:00. And these people would stand out in the snow, getting snowed on and rained on and freezing, and nobody would let them in the homeless shelter. They would stand there until 7:00. That's two hours. They would stand out in the freezing cold. And I'm just saying, we need more structure to our homeless people and the regular people in Pittsburgh. You can't let these people just wander around. There's a lot of homeless people, there's the need of outreach programs and a substance abuse, okay? They need outreach programs. There's a lot of homeless people that should be in places like Woodsville and Western Psych because they're not able to do for themselves, and they need help. They need professional help and housing, and they need rehabilitation. There's a lot of homeless people that are young men and women. And there's homeless people, like I said, that needs help with other issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District up at Caylee, Weir, Irvis. Now, Mr. Burgess says you're going to change how we're able to speak, but I want to let you know that you may cause problems. I want to bring something that is not going to be legislated here, but my grandbaby, nine-year-old, went to school. Please, come on now. Mr. Williams, Mr., see, you do this all the time, and when I say something, then I'm wrong, but I got three minutes to try to save lives. That's what I'm trying to do. My granddaughter goes to school. I gave her some pistachios to eat. He ate them. She sat behind a young girl that is allergic to peanuts. She started, her nose started running, she couldn't breathe. They had to move her up in the front of their class because my granddaughter's in the back, but had to move her because she could have died. My granddaughter, who's nine years old, said, Grandma, man, I could have killed her because I ate the nuts and didn't know that she's allergic. I'm saying to all the parents, any that's sending your children to school, don't give them peanuts because you don't know who's allergic to. That little girl could have died. I gave my granddaughters the peanuts. See, you know, you're so busy telling us what we can't say. There was another time here, a lady came, we were real full. She came, a white lady came, and she was looking forward, she didn't have the agenda, so I gave her one. She looked, she said, oh, it's not on agenda. I can't say nothing. I said, say it, say what you want. And she told us about Pitt, getting ready to take and make some kind of legislation that would have hurt the business people, would have hurt the city. She took and she said, the meeting's tomorrow morning. Okay, when I seen Mr. Gilmore the next morning, I said, you know something? That meeting, he said, Ms. Brown, Ms. Brown, we did call, we canceled it. It could have been something that we could have lost because you're saying we can only speak about what you're legislating on. It's wrong. It's wrong. We should be able to speak on what we want. I'm trying to help the city. I have a reason to try to stop the deaths, stop the killing, stop the abuse, stop the discrimination, stop the race-based hate, stop the race discrimination like Mr. Burgess because of my dark complexion. He likes to like conflicted or white women. He'll fight for them, and I can't speak because he says that I have no right to question Mrs. Gross when she comes in late and speaking when I'm speaking. I had three of them talking while I'm talking, but and when I say something, I'm wrong. You got Burgess talking, Coghill and Gross, three of them talking through my three minutes. I have a right to protest. I can't protest because he'll tell the sergeant of Orange that day to put me out because I seen the sergeant coming when he told me I couldn't speak. You need to get yourself together.
Is there any other speakers? Is there any other speakers? If seen no other speakers, we will now move on to the presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation, Ms. President Smith, on behalf of me. Thank you very much. Mr. Coghill, Chair of Public Works. Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 208, Resolution for the Amending Resolution Number 647, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget, 2021 CDBG Program, the 2021 Through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Southside Signals by $750,000. Bill Number 209, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, Local Share Account Statewide to Provide Funding for the Purchase of Bridge Maintenance Equipment. The grant proposal asks $990,000 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 210, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 332, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, Community Conservation Partnerships Program, to Provide Funding for the Three Rivers Heritage Trail Repaving Project to Accept the Grant and Authorize the Necessary Expenditures. Bill Number 211, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 344, entitled, Resolution Providing for a Letter of Amendment to the Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Construction Phase of the Southside Signals Project, Providing for the Payment of Municipal Incurrred Costs Not to Exceed $3,350,000 Federally Reimbursable to 100% with the Municipal Share of Commonwealth Incurrred Costs of $0 to Increase the Budget Authority for the Construction Phase to $4,094,000, $4,094,000, an increase of $740,640 from a previously executed agreement. Bill Number 212, Resolution Providing for an Agreement for Construction Services with SET Inc. for the Southside Signals Project at a Cost Not to Exceed $3,280,000. Bill Number 213, Resolution Providing for a Supplementary Agreement for Construction Services with Norfolk Southern Railway Company for the West Ohio Street Bridge Project at a Cost Not to Exceed $512,107, an increase of $109,021 from the Previously Executed Agreement. Bill Number 214, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, Local Share Account Statewide to Provide Funding for the Construction of a Maintenance Facility in the Fourth District. The Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $1 Million for this stated purpose.
Thank you very much. That takes us to.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like a motion to waive the rules of council on Bills 208, 211, and 212.
Need a second with brief discussion, please.
Mr. Kraus?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Coghill, thank you very much. Members, thank you. These bills are all related to the Southside Signal Project, which some of us older members will remember. I believe we passed the first block of funding for this maybe as long as seven years ago, but the project is ready to launch. We are ready to award contracts and proceed, and so I greatly appreciate members' indulgence in moving these bills forward. Thank you.
It has been properly moved in second to waive the rules of council, so these appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Mr. Burgess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 87, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soul Facilities Plan for 154 South 15th Street in the 17th Ward.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Councilman Cross, Chair Of Human Resources.
Thank you, Council.
Councilman Cross presents Bill Number 2, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 387, Which Authorizes The City Of Pittsburgh To Enter Into An Amended Professional Services Agreement With Corporate Cost Control For Third-Party Administration Of The City's Liabilities Under The Pennsylvania Unemployment Compensation Act For Four Additional Years Of Services By Extending This Contract For An Additional Four Years And Authorizing Spin For These Additional Years.
Thank you very much. Councilman Lavelle, Chair Of Finance And Law.
Mr. President?
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 216, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The City's Solicitor To Enter Into A Professional Services Agreement With Buchanan, Ingersoll, And Rooney P.C. For Legal Services For An Employment-Related Matter In An Amount Not To Exceed $75,000. Bill Number 217, Resolution Authorizing The Issuing Of A Warrant In Favor Of Autumn Kayshawn And Her Attorneys In The Amount Of $2,500 Relating To The Full And Final Settlement Of A Case Filed In The Allegheny County Court Of Common Pleas. Bill Number 218, Resolution Authorizing The Issuing Of A Warrant In Favor Of Tina Marie Cora Denali In The Amount Of $3,500 Relating To The Full And Final Settlement Of A Case Filed In The Allegheny County Court Of Common Pleas. Bill Number 219, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The City's Solicitor On Behalf Of The City To Enter Into A Professional Services Agreement With Strausberger, McKenna, Gutman, And Gus Sky To Address Pending Tax Litigation At A Cost Not To Exceed $20,000.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman O'Connor, Chair Of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 220, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 89, Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of Public Safety To Enter On Behalf Of The City Into An Amended Professional Services Agreement With Freedom Indeed LLC, Reverend Cornell Jones For Professional Services As A Group Violence Intervention Coordinator At A Cost Not To Exceed $501,908.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Strausberger, Chair Of Innovation, Performance, And Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strausberger presents Bill Number 221, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 44, Authorizing The Mayor And Director The Department Of Innovation And Performance To Enter Into An Agreement With Computronics For The Provision Of A Permitting And Licensing Package To Change The Funding Department For 2022.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair Of Land Use And Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 222, Resolution Providing For The Issuing Of A Warrant In Favor Of Interface Studio, $5,990 For Additional Services For Overritual Thirty-Six Hours For Stakeholder Interviews, Forty-Three Hours For Public Engagement, And Fourteen Hours For Agency Coordination Relating To The Manchester Tread Project. Bill Number 223, Ordinance Amending The Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Code Article Four, Planning Districts, Specifically Planned Districts In Article Five, Use Regulations Chapter 911, Primary Uses Section 91102, Use Table, And Section 91104, Use Standards To Remove The Review Of The Sidewalk Cafes From The Zoning Code.
Thank you very much. On behalf of President Kell Smith, who is the Chair of Hearings, she has an appointment and a communication.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 224, Resolution Appointing Maria Montano To The LGBTQIA+ Commission For A Term To Expire March 31st, 2025. This appointee will serve in a seat designated For A Representative Of The Mayor's Office. Bill Number 226, Communication From Sarah Kinter, Director Of The Department Of Permits, Consequences, And Inspections, Submitting PLIs Lead Safety Child Occupied Facilities 120-Day Report And The Rules And Regulations For Child Occupied Facilities Built Before 1978 In accordance The City Code Lead Safe Child Occupied Facilities.
Thank you very much. Motion to read, receive, and file.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
How are you? I believe we might need a motion to approve on 2024.
I do not think because she serves as the mayor's, but I could be wrong, Madam Clerk.
It's an appointment, not informing.
Okay, all right. So thank you very much, Mr. President, Mr. Past President and sort of is a resident expert on these matters. So thank you very much for that assistance. We will split the, we split them up into Bill 224. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, second, very brief discussion, please, Mr. Chair. Yeah, what a, what a perfect choice by the mayor to appoint Maria to the LGBTQIA Commission. Very, very pleased to see this come forward and very happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other conversation? See no conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, that takes us to 0226, which is, I will now entertain a motion. I think we have one, but I'll, there's already a motion on the table for this bill to re-receive and file. Is there any conversation? See no conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, that takes us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? No unfinished business. That now takes us to reports of committee for final action, starting with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee On Finance And Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 203, Reported The Committee On Finance And Law For March 23rd, 2022, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 154, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Department Of Law And Or Director Of The Department Of Finance On Behalf Of The City In Full And Final Settlement Related To The Litigation At The City Of Pittsburgh Versus Purdue Pharma As Coordinated In The Opioar Legislation Stemming From The Opioar Legislation In The U.S. District Court For The Northern District Of Ohio Initially As To Defendant McKeeson Corporation, Cardinal Health, Inc., AmerisourceBergen Corporation, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., Ortho MacNeil Pharmaceuticals, Inc., And Janssen Pharmaceuticals In A Further Settlement Defense To Accept A Yearly Allocation Of Funds Into A Special Revenue Account To Be Subsequently Created To Accept The Funds Of This Settlement As Determined By The Pennsylvania Intra-State Opioar Trust And Allocation Order. Bill Number 182, Resolution Taking, Appropriating, And Condemning By The City For Public Railway Purposes Certain Property In The 10th Ward Of The City Owned By Frank And Farina Calanelli And/or Their Estate Located Alone El Paso Street And Authorizing The Payment Of Just Compensation And Necessary And Incidental Acquisition Costs Related There Too. Bill Number 183, Resolution Authorizing An Intra-Departmental Transfer In The Amount Of $175,000 From Computer Maintenance Department Of Permits, Licenses, And Inspections To Computer Maintenance Department Of Innovation And Performance For Costs Associated With Computronics Expansion For Lead Inspections. Bill Number 184, Ordinance Amending The City Of Pittsburgh Code Of Ordinances At Title II Fiscal Article One Administration By Adding A New Chapter 220 Post-Issuance Compliance Policies.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill?
I'd like to make a motion to amend. Is that the one?
No.
Not yet.
Not yet. All right, I'll be with you. All right, is there any discussion on this bill? Seeing none, the bill is ready now for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross?
Aye. Sorry.
Mr. Cross?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Earl Connor?
Aye.
The Strausberg?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair?
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you very much. The bills having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Coriol Connor, Committee On Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 204, Reported The Committee On Public Safety Services For March 23rd, 2022, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 169, Resolution Authorizing The Issuing Of A Warrant In Favor Of International Trauma Life Support Pennsylvania In An Amount Not To Exceed $6,600 For Trauma And Life Support Certifications Necessary To The Mission Of The Bureau Of Emergency Medical Services. Bill Number 170, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director The Department Of Public Safety To Enter On Behalf Of The City Into An Amended Agreement With The National Association Of State Voting Law Administrators For Training And Certification Services Regarding The Department Of Public Safety Vote Operations At A Cost Not To Exceed $559,000 And Providing For The Payment Of Costs Thereof. Bill Number 185, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 12, Authorizing The Mayor And The Director Of The Department Of Public Safety To Enter On Behalf Of The City Into A Professional Services Agreement With The Poise Foundation At An Overall Cost Not To Exceed $2 Million For Services Relating To Violence Prevention Activities, $49,950 Of Which Will Compensate The Poise Foundation's For Its Services With The Remaining $1,950,050 To Be Subcontracted By The Poise Foundation To Other Third-Party Entities In accordance With Ordinance Number 40 And Chapter 237 Of The City Of Pittsburgh Code.
Heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Yes, we have a written amendment on the table.
Good.
I need a second to the amendment.
Second.
All right, Ms. Kell Smith?
I just want to thank Reverend and Councilman Lavelle For Being Agreeable To Having The Amendment And All The Members For Supporting. But I want to also thank our solicitor for drafting it. It just makes sure that any possible grants come back to council For Approval Prior To Issuing The Funding.
You've heard, it's been properly moved in second. Any other conversation on the amendment? If none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, the bill, the amendment has passed. That brings us to, back to the bill. Is there any more conversation on the bill? The bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye. When their name is called, those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Cross?
On the amendment, correct, Madam Clerk?
Oh, very. We are now on the regular.
Yeah, aye, thank you.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Strausberger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair?
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you very much. The bill having received a legally required vote is now finally passed. That brings us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee On Land Use And Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 205, Reported The Committee On Land Use And Economic Development For March 23rd, 2022, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 189, Resolution Providing For An Agreement With Neighborhood Allies To Provide Public Engagement And Citizens' Participation For The Community Development Block Grant Program In An Amount Not To Exceed $120,000.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on this bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Cross?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
The Strausberger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair?
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Bills having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to the next committee of the day, which is Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross, Committee On Intergovernmental Affairs. For me?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
What did I say? I'm sorry, did I do something? Yeah, that skipped you, I'm sorry. So I'm sorry, I turned the paper too fast. Sorry, Councilman Erica Strausberger, Committee On Innovation, Performance, And Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I turned the paper too fast, sorry.
Councilperson Strausberger presents Bill Number 206, Reported The Committee On Innovation, Performance, And Asset Management For March 23rd, 2022, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 186, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 726, Amending Resolution Number 548, Which Authorized The Mayor And Director The Department Of Innovation And Performance To Enter Into An Agreement Or Amendment With AMPRAM For The Lease Of The Multi-Function Devices And The Managed Print Services For A Sum Not To Exceed $375,000 Per Year For Five Years By Extending The Terms And Increasing The Not-To-Exceed Amount To $3,435,000. Bill Number 187, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 642, Which Authorized The Mayor And Director The Department Of Innovation And Performance Enter Into An Agreement With Beyond20 And Sherwell To Provide And Implement An ITSM System To License, Implement, Manage, Operate, And Deliver IT Services To Meet The Needs Of The City At A Sum Not To Exceed $542,731.80 By Increasing The Not-To-Exceed Amount To $1,162,257.40. Bill Number 188, Resolution Authorizing The City To Extend A Contract And/or A Agreement With The Pittsburgh Community Television For Public Access Television Services By Extending The Term Of The Agreement Until June 30th of 2022.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye. When their name is called, those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
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 The Strausberger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair?
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Now that brings us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee On Intergovernmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess.
Thank you, drum roll.
Yeah, got it.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 207, Reported The Committee On Intergovernmental Affairs For March 23rd, 2022, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 160, Resolution Adopting The Alcoa Act 537 Special Study. Bill Number 181, Resolution Approving Execution Of A Contract For Disposition By Sell Of Land Between The U.R.A. And City Of Bridges Community Land Trust Or Related Entity For The Sell Of Block 56 F Lots 3326, 326A, 327, 330, And 331 In The 15th Ward, Council District Number 5.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final actions. Those in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Cross?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That brings us to the end of our agenda, which is the motion and resolutions section. I first have some meeting announcements, and then I'll ask members for comments. First, tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., council will hold their standing committee's meeting. To register to speak on information that's pertaining legislation, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. And tomorrow evening at 6:00 p.m. at the Homewood YMCA, there will be a public briefing by the Reapportionment Advisory Committee on the Proposed Repportionment District Maps. You can register to speak at this meeting by filling out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or by emailing cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. And on Thursday, March 31st at 6:00 p.m. at the West End Active Healthy Living Center, council will hold a public hearing on the city's proposed annexation of Wilkinsburg. To register to speak at this hearing, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting's webpage by 3:00 p.m. Thursday. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Anything from members?
I just want to thank you, Councilman Burgess, for chairing the meeting and jumping in there.
We are partners, and we're always here to serve. I want to, I tend to use this time a little bit to share things, at least from my perspective. You, you, you buy on news and social media, and those of you who are watching the Oscars, saw a sad event. I saw that event and understood it immediately because I saw a lot of myself. I grew up in a neighborhood where violence was regular. I grew up in a time and in a place where one had to fight weakly to survive. After that exposure to that level of violence, then, you know, I went on to take martial arts for a number of years because I determined myself that I would no longer be a victim of violence and that if someone would step to me as a kid, I would have the resources, right? And so I spent six, seven years of training myself to be a weapon if needed. And I realized, but, but when I saw the event on, on, on Sunday, I did see a little of myself, that, that sort of aggression, because I'm that guy, right? I grew up in that way. And the thing that stuck, just struck me is, but that instinct is no different than the young men who shoot each other over tennis shoes, who shoot each other over signs and colors and, and acts of respect. That, that, that slap, that violent motion is the same thought process that goes into a young man killing another young man. And so, been praying about this really since that moment. That, that was a teachable moment for me and hopefully for all of us, that certainly we get angry. And there are, the anger is natural and normal, right? I've raised children and sons and have gotten angry, and they've gotten angry at each other. But I've taught them, and it is true, that violence in all its forms, whether with physical violence or gun violence, it's really all bad rotten fruit from the tree. We should have a healthy respect for each other and love each other because the Creator, no matter what we think of each other, the Creator loves us all and has created us as brothers and sisters. And I think that moment really should be a teachable moment to all of us, hopefully not just me, that violence in all its forms, for whatever it's, no matter how noble the cause, violence in its, all of its forms is always wrong. All right, need a motion to adjourn the meeting and approve the minutes and excuse the absent members.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.[1710.13]